We'll go ahead and call this council meeting, the first Monday, April 7th of 2025, to order, and can I get a roll call?
President.
President Jennifer Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Homelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Dr. David Walsh.
Here.
Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda, is there any updates for the?
No updates at this time.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And public comments, looks like Jessica Beal is here. Did you want to say something? You can step up to the podium, sorry. If you can state your address.
Yeah, 8900 West Blackwood Lane. I am the president of Skycrest Phase Two subdivision, or HOA, whatever you want to call it. And we put the petition in for water, and I just have some questions about it. On the, I don't see it in this printout. I know there have been some back and forth on like two fire hydrants or one fire hydrant, and on the paperwork that I had seen online last night, it looked like there were still two on the list, and I thought we had changed that to one.
There's actually one, but we went ahead and included the full cost, but the plan would be to go down to just the one, and we do a clean out on the second one, so.
Okay.
It's on there, but, because that's how we, that's how the, the whole addition was, we just went ahead and included it all, but the plan would be actually go down to just the one.
Go down to the one, okay. So will we be?
But actually, we'll be accepting that it'll be a amount not to exceed, and so we'll reduce it by the cost of the one. But you'll also have to do a clean out at the end, so there'll be a little bit of a modification.
Okay. And then the other thing I just wanted clarification on is, in the fall, when I first started talking, and I don't remember if it was you, Nick, or if it was someone else, but we had talked about the tap fee, and that was due at the time of tap-in, and I had asked if everyone had to tap into it, and I was told at that time it would be up to each homeowner. But then, when I turned the petition in, they said that if water's available, everyone has to tap in, so I want to.
And technically, our ordinance is written that way, but, you know, you're gonna, regardless of whether you're tapping in or you're using your existing, they'll actually, I mean, that fee will be charged to every single resident, so.
The tap fee or the, I know this.
The tap fee happens once it actually connects.
When it connects, okay. I just wanted clarification on those two things. And then timeline-wise, do we know, we have one person that's building right now, he's been building for quite a while, hoping to get him in there in the next six weeks or so, but he doesn't want to complete until we have water.
I would anticipate, once we get a construction agreement finalized, that within a month or so after they get supplies ordered and in, they would be looking to get started.
Okay. So we're probably six to eight weeks minimum?
Probably.
Is there, so I can get back with him?
Fair estimate.
Okay. That is all I had today.
Thanks for coming.
You don't have to.
No, you don't have to. We won't put you through that. Move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Was there any updates or any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto 7A, new business, which is going to be the Arbor Day proclamation, which I have here. The official proclamation for Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be the solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating temperature, cleaning the air, providing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, paper and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase the property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Jennifer Harrington, council, city council president of the city of Mays, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day. The city of Mays, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of future generations, dated the seventh day of April 2025. And that moves us on to the next proclamation. We have another one. Child abuse awareness proclamation for April 2025. Whereas prevention is possible with the right policies and investments, families and children can thrive and avoid contact with child welfare and other costly systems, and whereas the early experiences of a child impact them throughout their life, both positively and negatively, and whereas every family and child is filled with the tremendous promise, and we all have a collective responsibility to prevent adverse childhood experiences, foster the potential of every child, and promote the positive childhood experience, and whereas positive childhood experiences, such as loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences, and whereas families who receive support they need before a crisis occurs are better equipped to provide safe and healthy and nurturing environments, leading to children who are safer and healthier and more hopeful about their futures, and whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, can have long-term psychological and emotional and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations, and whereas primary prevention of child abuse and neglect can reduce the lifetime economic burden associated with child maltreatment, and whereas strengthening families throughout access to concrete economic and social and community-based supports reduces the likelihood of abuse and neglect and ensures that children have a foundation for lifelong well-being, and whereas the effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between a child, between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families, and whereas communities must make every effort to promote the programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to create awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families, safe and stable and nurturing environment, and whereas investments in prevention initiatives such as home visiting programs, family strengthening policies, economic support, and community-based child abuse prevention efforts are essential to building safer, healthier communities for children and for families, and whereas the prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, now therefore, I, Jennifer Harrington, council president, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Mays, Kansas, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of lives for all children and families. Together, we can create a state where every child can grow happy, healthy, and safe, with a hope for the future.
Thank you very much. As most of you know, my name's Ashley Coleman, and I am the mayor of Ketchikan, but tonight, I'm not here as a mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Department for Children and Families. So my role at DCF is the Support Services Program Administrator, so I'm part of the protection and prevention side. Child Abuse Prevention Month is something that we do every year to bring awareness to protecting children and bringing awareness to the initiatives that not only we have at DCF, but who should be here today is the Kansas Children's Service League. I think they got the time wrong, why I'm late. Sorry about that, guys.
Okay.
Our council starts at seven. I don't know what we're doing here. So, but, so, different volunteer and resource efforts in the community, so we just wanted to come and show our face, say we're here if you have any questions, and if you need to chat afterwards, I'm happy to be with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to sign that? Give them a copy.
Oh my God, I signed one or two already. Thank you. We can move on to 7C, which is 2025 Street Preservation, 45th Street North.
Good evening, Madam President and Council. Part of our 2025 Street Preservation Program, we've advertised and accepted bids for a 45th Street scrub seal and fox seal application, as well as restriping Tyler Road between 37th and 53rd Street. We deviated a little bit from what my predecessors planned for 2025 was. We believe this is a good project. It's a middle-of-the-road, type of micro-surfacing application for 45th Street where we have some larger future plans for that road. This is the same application that we did at 37th Street, west of Mays Road, 219th, so they'll apply the scrub seal and then a fox seal behind it and re-stripe. It's a, it's a good process that does a good job of getting some of the aggregate down into some of the larger cracks. It's called a scrub seal application because the actual drag box that they use to apply the aggregate is brooms, so it works back and forth and actually works the aggregate down into the cracks and the voids. So we've had good results, but we've been pretty pleased. So we're asking for you to accept a bid from Circle C on this project for 2025, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Nick, do we have experience working with them? The only reason I ask is the big discrepancy between the two bids.
The reason for the discrepancy is, as part of what Ross and I have been working on this year, is trying to broaden our horizons, get some more vendors involved in the game. So Circle C, we have worked with the last two or three years doing the same exact type of project. The other vendor was somebody from Kansas City, and so that's the reason for the larger, with such a discrepancy in the bids, is they'd have to mobilize, and so that's the reason for that. And we, we knew that that might be the case going into it, so.
Even though one was Kansas City, felt like two bids were good enough?
For this type of application, these are really the only vendors that do this, this type of scrub seal application that are local enough to not have huge mobilization costs. That wouldn't make it worth it for them.
So is it just that it's new enough, that other companies haven't picked it up, or they don't?
As far as the application, I wouldn't say it's new. It's actually a fairly old technique, and contractors are actually moving on to newer technologies, but we are trying to learn new technologies and techniques. We didn't have quite enough time to do that this year before we needed to get the projects out and bid and on the schedule, so. We do plan to look at some different techniques and things like that later this year, when other vendors are working in Wichita. They've actually invited us to come, come watch some.
Any further discussion, or not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam President, I would move to approve the bid from Circle C paving and construction in the amount of $82,998.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for us to approve the bid from Circle C paving and construction in the amount of $82,998. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
That moves us on to 7D, a resolution declaring the entire boundary of the city.
Yes, what's before you is a boundary resolution that describes the city limits for the city of Mays, and, and the city, under a state statute, is required to file a new boundary resolution whenever there has been annexations of additional land into the city that year, and they're required to do it by December 31st. It has been quite a few years since we did a boundary resolution. We have not been in compliance with that statute. By adopting this boundary resolution tonight, it'll bring us into compliance with the state statute. For example, and we've been working on this for probably a year and a half, two years, and the reason it's taken so long, we had Garver do it, and there's a public surveyor that works for Garver that's been working on it. The reason it's taken so long, for example, is the previous last boundary resolution we did was about four pages long. This one's about nine pages, so our boundaries have got a lot more complicated and a lot more involved since we last did a boundary resolution. But he has certified in a signed certification that this is the correct boundaries for the city of Mays, so we feel pretty confident that we've got the boundaries where they should be. The statute just requires the city to adopt the boundary resolution and doesn't say anything additional. However, the county wants the city to file with the city, with the county clerk's office, a copy of the boundary resolution, which we'll do immediately upon passage tonight. It'll be filed tomorrow with the county where it's supposed to be filed. I think that'll bring us into compliance with that statute and with what the county asks us to do.
I hope Garver gave us their most experienced legal description writer that they have, because that's something.
That's a pretty long one.
Never seen anything like that before.
No.
He's done quite a bit of surveys for us, of legal descriptions. I think he's pretty, pretty experienced in doing this kind of thing. I think he's done them for other cities, but he probably hadn't, he probably hadn't quite the difference in time that he's done them in the past, I suspect. But now that we have this, it'll be a lot easier to update it whenever we do annexations.
Annual basis, yeah.
And we'll do it in December. If we have any, I don't think we've had any additional land added to the city this year, but if we do, we'll do it again in December.
Is that possible? We can take a quick look of our boundary? Is there any map?
Yes, there's a map somewhere.
I'm just.
Need a map for the maps.
We weren't prepared for that one.
I think we do have maps, though, so we'll be able to.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So I'm just curious, compared to the last resolution, you know, in terms of area, how much is the increase for Mays? Because I don't know that the previous one.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know, but I would, I'm sure that we've more than doubled.
Oh.
I think it's several, several times larger than what it was the last time that we, we found, with the boundary ordinance we found. There may have been something passed after that, but what we found, again, it was a lot shorter, four pages versus nine pages, so you can imagine how much more territory that covers in nine pages as opposed to four.
That's within four years?
Has it been four years?
Is that, how many years in the gap? I don't know, I'm just curious.
Twenty-five.
Oh, wow. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So is this something we've just never done?
We've never done it, and I don't have an explanation of why it was never, it was done in 2000.
Okay.
But since then, we don't, we haven't found that it's been done. That's not to say that it hadn't been done and we just didn't find it.
I hadn't heard. Well, just a second. Any further discussions? Just not? We need a motion?
Madam.
Do I have to, do we have to vote to move to adopt?
Yes.
Madam President, I would move to adopt the boundary resolution and direct staff to file it with the county clerk.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, or to move to adopt the boundary resolution and direct staff to file it with the county clerk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moves us on to Eagle View Estates Garage Condos, Sanitary Sewer, Reed Petition and Bid Acceptance.
The city of Mays received back in October petitions for this particular project. It's a relatively small section of sewer to connect to existing sewer, to the garage condos there on 53rd Street between Mays Road and 119th. It was, and basically, at the time, you approved that and authorized Garver to move forward to design it and seek bids. Garver designed the project. We opened bids on February 12th. There were only two bids that were received from Don Linger and from Meese, with Meese being the low of the two bids. Unfortunately, the price was significantly higher than the engineer's estimates on this particular project. The engineer's estimate's $56,000. Five thirty, and the low bid was $227,000, so you can see there's quite a huge discrepancy between those two. At the time, just based upon the cost, we went ahead and rejected all those bids, and upon the request of the applicant wanting to have the improvement made, we allowed them to do, seek a private bid that would be open via, in front of the city, in a closed seal bid process. They were able to, they did a lot of outreach to different firms to see whether they'd be able to come up with an option for that. They were able to find a bidder that was willing to put a significantly lower amount down on that, and, and the interest of making sure we could get the project done, we allowed, we went ahead and, we went ahead and opened that bid, and the low bid, and after receiving it, was $141,590 from Apex excavating, and the cities, the city, we asked, some of the stipulations we had, is we asked that, that on behalf of, that Garver on behalf of the applicant, ask us to officially do this, and that we would accept sealed bids only, and we did receive sealed bids. Fortunately, there was only one. Fortunately, it was significantly lower than the other, the other particular bids. We know that some of the cost differentiation had to do a little bit with dewatering, and it also had to do with traffic control, perceived cost of traffic control that would be related to that. We did ask the engineer also to resubmit engineer's estimates, and they kind of modified their engineer's estimates. It was below the engineer estimates. It was below the engineer estimates that, and their modified numbers, which was a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety thousand. So at this point, staff's recommendation is go ahead and accept that low bid from the private letting of Apex Excavating LLC for the amount of one sixty-two, one ninety. And that we authorize acceptance of a revised petition with a total amount of a hundred eighty-nine thousand six fifty-nine eighty-one, which covers the increased amount of the original petition of seventy-four thousand six fifty-nine eighty-one. That was, that was accepted back in November of twenty-four. So at this point, a hundred eighty-five thousand of that would be the new improvement. While the four thousand six hundred fifty-nine eighty-one would defray the cost of previously acquired improvements that were installed with anticipation of future development in this area. So that's, that's the additional charge we have decking onto our system is what that additional five thousand is.
What was the purpose of asking Garver to redo the engineering estimate after the fact?
Well, after Tom and I talked about it, because we knew that there were some adjustments with de-watering, we asked that they go back in and, and estimate what we really thought those costs would be and if there were any adjustments for the, for the traffic engineering. We wanted it to be a, sometimes engineers don't always get it right when they come to us with estimates, as you'll kind of hear on the next item as well. But what we wanted to do is make sure that we had some bearing on any revised costs that might come in, knowing what, what we knew after receiving the initial bids that we all rejected.
Then the other question I had was, their bid was a hundred forty-one thousand five ninety and it ended up at one sixty-two, one ninety?
Their bid was, their bid actually was, I'm sorry.
There's an additional line item on there for a two-inch water line for twenty thousand six hundred.
I didn't pull up the tab.
Yeah, for water meter services.
Eighty-nine is the tab.
For water meter services, there was a twenty thousand six hundred, and that's basically to connect it to the system. It's one sixty-two, one ninety was the total amount.
Nick, were the original two bidders notified and given the opportunity to rebid?
Yes, absolutely could have rebid, but typically it's not going to be the case.
Do they have any other questions or comments?
Is there, there's nothing in our policy that would state that we can't do this to allow a private bid letting?
My knowledge or it's not, I don't know. I talked with Tom about it.
Right, and there's not anything in the state statute that requires it either.
Okay.
The state statute really has no requirements for our size city on bidding.
Quite frankly, if this wouldn't have come down as far as the bid, we'd have had to look at something totally different, like a private system on there, which would have been quite expensive as well, so. The properties, you know, as, as you'll remember, for this particular platid property, there's a portion that is the garage condos, and then there's another portion that is the neighborhood. And so they'll, they will have to bid the neighborhood, but they already have access to sewer. So they won't have to extend the city main, but there will be, there potentially could be some challenges there as well. Shallow sewers are a challenge in Mays. High groundwater, high, high groundwater and the depths of the sewers have a lot of bearing on costs.
The contract for this would still be held through the city of Mays?
Yes. And we reserve the right to, to vet any of the, any of the selected firms. And we, we, we let them know that at that point, it's if it was somebody that, without the qualifications to be able to do this kind of work. This is a relative, one of the other things, this is a relatively small project comparative. I think three hundred and, like three hundred eighty feet of sewer, so it's very, 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 very small project.
Yeah, it sounds like the optics of it were good and everybody was communicated well with. That's, that was just my only concern is making sure that everybody feels like they had a chance, even if it meant that they were having, having to rebid the job for a second time, as long as we gave them that opportunity.
I would entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to accept the repetition for Eagles View Estate Lot One, Lot Two, sanitary sewer in the amount of one hundred, one hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Adopt a revised resolution of advisability of Eagle View Estate Lot One, Lot Two sanitary sewer improvements. Accept the bid of Apex Excavating LLC for sanitary sewer improvement. Eagle View Estate Lot One, Lot Two, for the amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred ninety dollars.
I will sign it.
We have a motion and a second to accept the repetition. Let me go, I'll just lay it out and then we can talk more if you want to. We have a motion and a second to accept the repetition for the Eagles Ness Estates Lot One, Lot Two sanitary sewer in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Adopt the revised resolution of advisability for Eagles View Estates Lots Lot One, Lot Two sanitary sewer improvements. And accept the bid from Apex Excavating LLC for sanitary sewer improvements at Eagle View Estates Lot One, Lot Two, in the amount not to exceed a hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred ninety dollars.
My only question was going to be on the motion, is that, are those dollar amounts correct? I'm not sure I understand the one eighty-nine, six fifty-nine, eighty-one.
There was another order of four thousand.
You're talking about on the petition amount?
Yeah.
The petition amount's typically higher because it includes cost of design and everything else.
Got it.
And you said there was another order already that we approved for, how much was that for? Was it four, forty-six hundred fifty-nine eighty-one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where that amount comes from.
Okay.
When I, when I give you old, old numbers, sometimes that can be confusing, but.
But everybody agrees it's written the right way anyway. Okay. Good.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Moves us on to seven F, and that is Skycrest Second Edition Repetition, Repetition and Modified Resolution of Advisability for Water Main Improvements.
Back on September ninth, you had the city council accepted petitions for water line installation project at Skycrest Second Edition. With the total amount for that petition was ninety-six thousand, which was believed to cover all the cost of installing water lines in that area. At the time, we received a majority of the property owners in Skycrest Second, six of the eight, signed off on that petition. We opened bids on March twenty-seventh, twenty-five, with NOOC in, construction being the low bidder for the combined base bid and alternative bid that we hoped to accept on that project at ninety-eight thousand three seventy-four. Unfortunately, in, in this instance, similar as the last one, prices came in over engineer's estimates, and that requires the middle of a new petition. So after accepting, after taking those bids, we went back out to the property owners to make sure that they were still willing to do the project based upon the additional costs. And we did receive a successful petition with seven of the eight property owners signing off on that. That's estimated that through this repetition, the total cost of the project after bidding is a hundred twenty thousand four hundred, plus the cost of the acquired improvement charges as well. At this point, council needs to accept the repetition, the revised resolution of advisability and accept the low bid for total work to be completed by NOOC Construction for an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand three seventy-four, which covers the cost of the base project and the alternates selected as, as our, as the individual from Skycrest Second indicated. One thing that we were willing to accept was that we do one hydrant, only one hydrant required by Georgia County Fire to be able to serve this. It's, it's very typical that we would end a sewer line with a hydrant, but it doesn't have to happen that way, though it's our preference that way. Because the cost got higher, we were willing to concede to not include that piece. So the actual amount will give, will be able to be reduced minus the, the other hydrant cost that's on there. So you look on the, if you look at the base bid, you, you see that it shows a second hydrant and the add alternate. So we'll be able to reduce it by that amount, minus the cost of doing a clean out, sewer clean out. But I could.
Water flush.
Do we have to do that more periodically without having a hydrant at that end?
It's just easier to flush it that way. That'll be the challenge, but it's not, it's not the only way to flush, flush it.
Anyone have any other questions for Nick?
Madam President, I would move that we accept the repetition for Skycrest Second Edition Water Improvements in the total amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents. That we adopt the revised resolution of advisability for Skycrest Second Edition Water Improvement. And that we accept the bid of NOOC Construction for water improvements at Skycrest Second Edition for the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Good.
We have a motion and a second to accept the repetition for Skycrest Second Edition Water Improvements in the total amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Adopt the revised resolution of advisability for Skycrest, Skycrest Second Edition Water Improvement. And accept the bid from NOOC Construction for the water improvements at Skycrest Second Edition for the amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. That moves us on to, it looks like we have an executive session tonight. And so I would, I don't know if I can do it. Can I do it since I'm presiding? Okay. I would move that we most, that we recess into executive session, session to discuss, for the governing body to recess and discuss a claim that the city received pursuant to KSA twelve dash one oh five B. This discussion will involve the consultation with an attorney for the city that is deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA twelve dash forty-three nineteen B two. The open meeting will resume in this room at, I was told fifteen minutes, so at six fifty-five. And we will go ahead and adjourn to the conference room for that. We've returned from executive session, and there is no other business on the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.